All right, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Call roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Lori Knessky.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
You rise for the clutch, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members in tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone this is a meeting on the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First, I'll make a motion to approve the February 17th, 2021 special meeting minutes, February 25th, 2021 board meeting minutes, and the March 5th, 2021 special meeting minutes. If I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hack. Is there any discussion? Scott, call roll, please.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Lori Knessky.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. And it takes us to Special Reports.
Oh. I thought you were doing it.
Well, I thought you were going to restart them always.
Inasmuch as we like to build relationships with our surrounding municipalities, our townships, we've asked our Concord trustees to give us an update on all the things that are going on in Concord. We really appreciate their representation in part of our district as well. Concord is an up and coming township with a lot of growth the last couple of years. And I know that they have now some new trustees that have just were elected to office last few years, I would say. And we haven't had a real chance to really talk in a more public forum than we have in the past. So we have them here, and we're going to give them a few minutes to talk a little bit about what's going on.
Yep, and I thank you, Mr. McIntosh. He reached out to me to get this set up, so I appreciate you guys doing that today. We're going to just quickly tell the watching audience about, a little bit about you guys before we get started. Mr. McIntosh is back there behind us in the blue. He was elected in 2019. He's the president of Omega One, a Willoughby-based manufacturing company. He attended Minnesota State University, earning a B.S. in law enforcement. He's a graduate of the Cleveland Leadership Institute and Cleveland Bridge Builders. As a bridge builder, Morgan helped the Lake County Free Clinic establish its fundraising sources in an annual fundraising event. Morgan works for the Lake County Board of Elections and Election Day Rover. He is served on the Learning About Business Board and is volunteer to the day chair and guest speaker, and has resided in Concord for 22 years. Morgan was appointed to the Concord Kansasville judge in October 2019, has served on the Concord zoning commission for 10 years until his election in 2019. Amy Lucci, we have on the other side over there. She was elected in 2017, is a 19-year resident of Concord Township. She attended Banner High School and graduated from Bowling Green State University with a bachelor's science and nursing degree. She later graduated from Capital University with a master's degree in nursing administration and a doctorate of nursing practice from Chamberlain School of Nursing. Amy is currently a program manager for the Cleveland Clinic, where she has been employed for over 26 years and is responsible for clinical and surgical operations, and is married to Judge Eugene A. Lucci. Carl Donorfer is sitting between them and was elected in 2017. He's a 12-year resident of Concord Township for the BA in local science from Bowling Green State University. Carl has served the residents of Concord Township over the past 25 years in his role as deputy sheriff for the Lake County Sheriff's Office. He is currently serving with the Wakeville Police Department. He and his wife Allison have two children. So with that, we will cast it on to the three of you. Welcome to the meeting tonight, and thank you for being here.
We also want to introduce the Capitol and demonstrate the true meaning of the Constitution. We just want to salute you.
Sorry, thank you.
I can embellish your background a good light?
No. Thank you.
I will.
Is there going to be a problem if I stand?
No, go ahead.
Well, Madam Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to come in and speak tonight. It is a privilege to be here. I just want to add, it's a privilege to serve with both Carl and Amy. We all took office collectively about a year ago, January of last year was our first, we started together. So we certainly jumped into being elected officials together in a challenging year. And that didn't really deter us from making an effort to just take business on as usual and take on initiatives and so forth. So I think the biggest, most, the biggest thing we've got going on in Concord now from the township's perspective is that we assessed that the challenging decision to put the fire levy on the ballot, and that is now going to be a multi-year construction project for both of our stations that's going to go on through the next couple of years. And I think, you know, as this board knows, that you have to deal with these things, and it's always a challenge to go out to the voters and deal with that. And it wasn't an easy decision. We went through that process by having a number of public hearings and engaging the community. And I can say to this day right now, the project stands at a particular point, and there is a direction we're going based on resident feedback. So I think we feel really proud about that accomplishment, and I think the needs of the pandemic just underscored the importance of that. So we're excited that is moving forward and that we kind of got that one done. And like I said, it was a challenging year to take that project on. In 2020, we made an effort to maintain as much of business as usual. We actually committed to being present together as a team and held only one virtual meeting as far as being trustees and went out, met residents, and had an open forum as much as we were able. The township kept its offices open as much as possible and continued to serve our community. We made it through 2020 with most of our road projects. The township took care of the projects we had planned and got those done. The county finished up Morley Road all the way across the township, which had been started the prior year. And we've had a number of county roads reworked in the last couple of years. And just driving around the township has been a nice improvement, and so we thank the county for that, and we have a good relationship with them. One of the projects that didn't get done last year was the Crowell Road project. And as many of you know, I do know I'm actually looking at, I believe, at least four, if not, I'm not sure where Lori lives, but I know that I've got four Concord residents in front of me. So I'm sure we all endure the traffic on Crowell Road and know that it's a road that needs attention, but that the increased volume there is also something that needs attention. So this year, we will be seeing that entire road resurface and adding a center turn lane. And the demand for that capacity is truly because of the growth of the business in that district. We are recently approved, or we'll see, for an ice cream shop, a car wash. But most importantly, and I think the thing Concord residents are most anxious for, of course, is Lucky's Market coming to fill the vacancy that was left by riders. We have had an opportunity to meet with the owners of Lucky's and tour one of their other stores, and I think Concord residents will be very pleased to see the full-service grocery store occupy that. It's going to be a very nice product, and I think while we've endured a lot of waiting, and it's been a painful process, to not have that resource when it comes, I think the wait will be well worth it. So we are trying to work with Lucky's and the county to time the opening of their store to coincide with that project not, you know, not being in the way of them. So that's, but they are in and demoing, and that project is moving forward as of today. So a carryover from 2020, there was a, in addition to Crowell Road being delayed, the Brightwood Creek restoration, so for Proudie Road between North Meadow and South Meadow, that Brightwood Lake will be draining that dam later this season, and there was some state grant dollars that were paid as paying for that entire project. So that'll be a natural stream restoration that will take the project back to the way it was.
The 60s, 60, 58?
58, 1958. So that's something that'll be nice to see done. And I remember 20-some years ago, when I first moved to Concord as a boy, I slammed in that lake. So it's kind of an interesting culmination. And thank you for noting that I said on the JED board. And between the township and the JED, we've seen quite a bit of interest in businesses located in Concord or some different structures. We've got a doctor's office that's under process to be being built. We've got another manufacturing company looking at some vacant buildings. And there's a couple other projects that are in various stages of people doing diligence. So that will bring more business and more payroll to the economic district of JED. So we're very excited about the opportunity to see that growth continue. You know, the infrastructure that's been placed in that area is definitely paying dividends. And of course, the homes. We have a number of developments that are, we just planted Lily Farms last summer, and I live down the corner from that. I think it's half-built by now. All of those houses started getting worked on last fall, and it's crazy. We've got more phases of Quail Hollow coming to fruition. For those that don't know, that was a PUD that was approved in 1986. So we're still building out Quail Hollow. And I think in addition to the two phases that are sort of in active state, there's another one. So Quail Hollow, after so many years, is finally coming close to done. But so that's kind of a quick snapshot of what's going on. Again, I want to thank the board for this opportunity to share what's happening in Concord. And I would just, if my fellow trustees have anything they'd like to add, or if the board has any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them.
I'll add something. I just wanted to, in addition to kind of Morgan going over some of the updates for Concord, I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate what the Riverside Board has done. I'm sure we all appreciate safety, growth, quality. I had three girls that, one is going to be a senior next year, two other girls that graduated from Riverside, so I applaud for all your efforts, and I thank you for what you do for not only Concord, but the other municipalities in your district. And we look forward to this coming year, and yours to come. So thank you.
I'd also just like to thank the board for their diligence in providing their services to the residents within the townships. We've done some other work as far as safety initiatives in the township that people had concerns about. I know I spoke with Mr. Miley a few minutes ago. We had some work done on some traffic signals that have been problematic over the years in the township at the intersection of Morley and Proudie Road, where we've had some increases in accidents, and as well as on Girdle Road. We're working right now with getting those evaluated and hope to mitigate those risks to safety in those areas. We're working on that. But again, thank you for the collaboration and the opportunity to come in tonight.
Thank you also, Mike.
Thank you also, Josh.
I want to thank you also for your accessibility. I've noticed over the last year or so that your communication lines are open. If I need to talk to one of you, you're easily to get ahold of. You respond quickly, and we do appreciate all the things that you do for not only Concord but all the kids in our district as well. It's been a, it's been a very good relationship thus far. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, let's take this then to old business. If anyone has anything. All right, then to new business. All right, and next up is the Board of Education Committee Liaison Reports. The first thing is a business, Superintendent's Business Advisory. Can you pull up the email really quick from Dr. Vasich about what we have going on there?
Yeah, next meeting will be on the 9th or April 8th.
8.
8.
Yep. So they had a small group of Business Advisory members met with Bill Ross, who's going to be teaching a new business course next year. They're able to provide input on the course design and brainstorm ways to maximize the value of the course for the students. Same group also met with Melissa to discuss work-based experiences for our students specifically, looking at individuals who'd be interested in mentoring students in the workplace. Also, Lisa Miller is helping our remote classes with programming from OSU in the areas of mental health and wellness. Several teachers have indicated interest in having members of her group present to their classes on the topic. And then, as we said, the next meeting for the Business Advisory Committee as a whole is April 8th. I assume with everything going on this year that we're not, are we going to have senior projects?
No.
No.
Well, we have conflicting information.
What did you say?
I said, yes, they have a modified version. It is not, it's not what it traditionally has been, but there is that option.
Okay.
So it's also a little bit different.
Did he describe it?
So there's four different options around the idea, and it's interesting because I just asked about this last week, I think it came up, where they have the ability, the kids have the ability to create something, or I could get off the top of my head, I'm hesitant to even go into it. There's four different things that they can do related to a career path that they are interested in. So if they can meet with someone and interview them and that kind of thing, that's allowed. There might be some Zoom stuff going on, but it also is some exploration or investigation or research into careers. So there's a couple of different things, options that they are giving the seniors so that they have the option of the experience. It will not look like it does.
Right.
Or has traditionally, just because of the situation.
And again, we have to decide what that definition is because my discussion with Dr. Vasich today was about, so we all need to be on the same page on that.
Okay.
Okay. That takes us on to curriculum and programming and boosters. Mr. Miley.
Okay, under curriculum and programming, we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, so nothing due until that meeting, and no booster meeting, so that's all I have.
Okay. Buildings and grounds, operations, and alumni, Mr. Hack.
So there will be alumni meeting, actual, April 12th, so I plan to attend that, and it looks like it's going to be here in person in the boardroom, and that would definitely be good. And we have a Buildings and Grounds meeting on Thursday morning as well.
Okay. Policy and strategic plan, Mrs. Knessky.
The policy committee has not had a meeting, but I do believe that we met with Neola, so we will be putting one on the books in April, so we'll be getting some new policy to review. And then strategic planning, we do have the contract for the Educational Partnership Institute on the calendar, or on the finance and audit agenda. And also, we completed the survey that was sent out to us, I hope all of us did, so we should be moving forward with a working session in the near future.
We don't have one scheduled?
No.
Okay.
All right, that takes us then to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Bayless.
We have a few items. We've had 16 COVID cases district-wide since our last Board of Education meeting on February 25th. This is down from the 38 COVID cases that we had between January and February's meetings. Nine students and seven staff. There's been a total of 214 COVID cases this school year, 141 students and 73 staff. In addition to the staff members who have tested positive, we've had just four staff members who were out for some period of time since February 25th because they were either awaiting test results or because they were instructed to quarantine. This number is down from 23 staff members between our January and February meetings. Approximately 65% of our total staff, or 350 staff members, have received both doses of the COVID vaccine, most recently this past Friday for a second dose. The CDC updated its guidelines for K-12 schools on Friday, March 19th, same day that we had our second vaccine. And the revised physical distancing recommendations reflect three feet instead of the six feet, so long as the students have face masks on. They removed the recommendation for physical barriers. What people don't know is that we are going to get rid of the dust shields. Now, I waited until the board meeting to announce that because we're planning on sending out a notice tomorrow. And basically, what that notice is going to say is that we no longer need the dust shields. The reason why we purchased them in the first place was the fact that we could not keep the kids more than six feet apart in the beginning of the school year, so we did everything we can to try to adhere to the guidelines. And we were one of maybe three schools in the area that bought those shields. They didn't last as well as I thought they would, and they're getting pretty tattered. And since the CDC is telling us six feet in the beginning of the year, now they're saying only three, then they're also giving us the reason why we need to take them down. Now, we did work with the Health Department, and they said that we can take them down. So we are going to give the option, though, for any parent that would want their kids still to have one, either during lunch or on the table in the elementary level, or carry it around at the high school, they can still do that. But it's not going to be mandatory, and I have a sneaking suspicion that not too many kids are going to want to carry that thing around anymore. We did send out a survey in conjunction with the RLEA, and even the teachers, 90, more than 90% of the teachers don't want them anymore. It's just hard to see through them, especially if you're a student laying in the bath, trying to look through all of those, it's just difficult.
So that will be, though, I mean, the kids won't have, there won't be a certain teacher that maybe is really against it and says, but in my class, you're going to use a shield, but they're gone.
The teacher can put up their own shield if they would like.
Okay.
Yes, that's not, the students and the parents are going to be able to choose whether or not to have those up.
Okay.
We're not asking for those back, obviously.
No, but we're asking them not to be thrown away either. Who knows what's going to happen? The guidance might change again.
Right, are we going to?
We'll collect the elementary, we're going to collect the elementary, and the high school students are to keep their own, I don't know, at their house somewhere.
It does say that, it will say that, yeah. Hang on, it'll fix something changes.
Also, a couple other guidelines have changed to clarify the world of community transmission levels and decision-making. If a person has been fully vaccinated and been around someone who has COVID, they do not need to stay away from others or get tested unless you have symptoms, unless they have symptoms. A couple other things in terms of traveling, you know, this is, spring break's coming up, and everyone's been cooped up for the last year, and I think some people are letting their guard down. There are some guidance as well on travel. I thought I would also mention that during my report. That with spring break approaching, Ohio has changed its travel guidance, and they changed it on March 10th. Ohio Department of Health will no longer issue travel advisory for those entering Ohio after traveling the state, reporting positive testing rates of 15% or higher. The Ohio Department of Health now encourages Ohio to carefully review the CDC's travel guidelines on traveling, which include postponing travel and stay home if you feel sick, or test positive for COVID. Delay or postpone travel if you've known, if you were known to have been exposed to COVID. Traveling increases your chances of getting or spreading COVID. And postponing travel and staying home is the best way to protect yourself and others from COVID. Even if you feel well and do not have symptoms, you can still spread COVID to family, friends, and community after travel. It is different than what it was earlier in the year. And I just thought I would put that out there for any of the parents that might be listening today and think about traveling. It is, restrictions are a little bit lighter, but they still exist. You probably heard over the past month that Governor Devine and the Ohio Department of Education have been expressing concern over student learning loss due to the year-long COVID crisis. And because of this concern, the governor and ODE are requiring school districts to develop plans to address this learning loss. That's the tough part about all of this. We have to come up with a program that's going to address the learning loss in our students K through 12. They are giving districts, however, the local control over how we're going to offer programming to meet the needs of students beyond the regular school year. After considering all that has happened over the course of the academic year and how it has potentially impacted our students, we have decided to offer a summer program for our students K through 12. We're breaking it down into two basic grade levels, K through 8 and 12. Our plan would require students to show for a need for the summer remediation. Not all students will qualify. Our focus will be on students who will need help. We will identify students by first separating them into those two groups, and from those two groups, we would identify them through, the elementary, middle school level would be through data collected throughout the year such as math scores, also their grades, curriculum-based assessments, online math programs, benchmark assessments for reading. In high school, would simply be for credit recovery if you failed the class, you're going to be eligible to take credit for the program. Melissa has a informational piece that we're going to eventually send out to the parents that if you want to pass them out now, that would be good, but finish the rest of this. The high school, our students will qualify, like I said, for a credit recovery. The summer school program would be two, three-week sessions in the summer. The first session would be July 14th, July, June 14th to July 2nd. And the second section would be July 12th through July 30th. The sessions would be on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And elementary sessions will focus on the foundational skills taught through thematic units. The middle school sessions will focus on improving reading, writing, and math skills taught through project-based learning. And the high school sessions will focus on credit recovery with a possible community service requirement as well. It might be more closely related to school, but we still want them to have a community service requirement as well. This is not mandatory. We can identify the students, but if they don't come, they don't come. But we're going to do everything we can to try to get them here. And one of the things we're trying to do is eliminate any type of obstacles that would keep them from coming here. So we are going to offer them transportation, and we're also going to offer them breakfast and lunch for the students who attend. And it's my understanding, and maybe Gary or Melissa, I know we've been talking about this, that the SRR funds would be used to fund this program. Melissa, did you want to type in?
I will just say, the document that you received is still in draft form, so you will see some editing errors, you'll see some placeholders where I put XXs because I'm not sure exactly what information will be in there. We have to post that to our website and send the link to the Department of Education by April 1st, so that will be posted for everyone to see and will be sent on to ODE next week. Just wanted you guys to get eyes on it and know what's going to be out there. We're going to talk a little bit more in depth at the programs meeting, but because of the April 1st deadline, we had to kind of do things in reverse. So normally, I would have had this conversation at the Curriculum Committee meeting, but because of the timing, it's kind of flip-flopped. So if you have any input or any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or to Jack or Tom because we're meeting on Thursday.
Just to note, we did talk about this at our Finance Committee meeting as well, and we did, we did have some concurrence on using some of the SRR funds to pay for this program, and I think there was a set aside from SRR 3.
Right. Our understanding is that the third round of federal funding that we are getting from the Biden stimulus package, which is estimated at 2.4 times SRR 2, which equates to about 3.9 million is about what we're thinking. And there is a, our understanding is requiring that 20% of that has to be spent on learning loss, so it's estimated about $780,000 that will have been made for that purpose. I don't think we'll be anywhere near that with the program we have together, but we're going to, you know, utilize as much as we can and do everything we can to help our students. And so that was part of the requirements of SRR 3 when that, when those requirements were.
And if I'm not mistaken, the 20% doesn't have to be spent till 2024?
Yeah, we have, I understand, because the SRR 2 funding was through September 30th of 2023, but I think this third round is until 2024, I believe. But we haven't seen the final guidance.
And I do have to commend, you know, Melissa and Dr. Mockr and this, the administration, simply because at the end of the day, when we had our finance meeting on the 15th of March, it was, this was just being brought to the table, and they had just found out about that. So to be able to put this type of a program, like at least the document and whatever, and come up with a program and a plan, that's, that's fast work, so, you know, great job.
And there's a team, this, we've done it as a team, and instructional coaches. I will say, though, that we won't be qualifying and inviting students until May, because obviously, we'll want the most accurate data that we can have before we start inviting students to participate.
So just on that very topic, are you, we, most schools had a, you know, they didn't divide the academics that were provided between in-person and online like we have. We have two separate curriculums. Are we seeing a difference in performance based on one type of delivery versus the other? I mean, are more, are more kids online needing this, do you think, or vice versa, or is it about the same? Who would be your best guess at this point?
I don't know, and I would hesitate to even guess because I'm not sure. I will tell you that for a lot of students, the remote programming did not work, which is why there is an in-person component so that we can support them, put a little pressure, especially on our high school students that need that credit recovery. The community service piece will also serve to help them start to earn hours towards the community service seal, which freshmen and sophomores need for graduation. So that's part of the reason that is a component of their in-person experience at the high school level.
And obviously, every year, we have a situation where there are some seniors who have issues with regard to having enough credits and things to graduate. What is your assessment of this year compared to pre-COVID era, you know, issues?
So I'll also kind of dovetail into the other thing that Jim asked me to talk, to speak to, which is House Bill 67, which has granted us some flexibility in those graduation requirements, much like we were granted last year. We actually just had a meeting today. I met with guidance counselors, and Mr. Bayless is getting his final list together of at-risk students. So they've been on our radar, but we do have some flexibility through House Bill 67, which does allow us to use grades in lieu of some of the end-of-course exams like we were able to do last year. So we'll be looking at that. It does allow us, although we did not exercise this option last year, we didn't believe through our discussions, to lower the credit requirement for graduation. I don't believe I don't believe we did that for any student last year. So we are not looking at utilizing that avenue to help kids graduate. There is an option to look at, especially students who have IEPs. If as a district, we feel they are on track for graduation and the COVID-19 crisis has impacted their ability to either earn credit or finish courses, then we have the ability to say they have earned their diploma. And then one of the final things that House Bill 67 allows for is for us to cancel the American History Test this year for sophomores. We have not decided if we're going to do that or not. That's typically when the students would take the test is in their sophomore year because that's when they're taking the class. But they have removed the accountability for taking that test for this year.
It exists public in charge of public schools from industry.
So why, why, of all the, the different classes, why would they choose to make the, the American History Test optional?
I don't know.
I don't have an answer either.
I have one.
It is, it is not an account, it is not an accountability requirement from the federal government. So that is a state option test. So that might factor into, but I have no idea why they picked American History and, and not anything else.
Yeah, it seems a little.
They were slowly, maturely backing out of American History for quite a few years.
Yeah. I definitely, putting a marker on the table, I, I mean, that would not be something I would be very excited about if we did not acquire it.
There's a lot of discussion right now too, among other schools in the area that are canceling their final exams. I think matter of one may fail with another and we've been discussing it. And I can't see how we, why we should if we gave, we gave midterms. And now we're in session. So I don't see why we, we shouldn't give the final exams.
Well, we've been in school a year.
Yeah. And some of those other schools, they canceled the midterms, correct?
Uh, some of them.
Some, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's to the point, we, we, we're starting to get into a better place now after a year. And we need to keep on progressing in that direction, I think. Try to get back to much normalcy as we can, trying to balance what we are required to do from the health departments and keeping kids in school. I mean, we, we really tried to keep them in school. It wasn't until, what, late November that they, they hit remote. And that was our whole philosophy to start was we're either in or out. We're not doing all this hyper scheduling and everything else.
I have one other question for Dr. Malacher. For the program, you said they're going to be by invitation. If there is a parent or guardian that's concerned about their student that maybe cannot receive the invitation, are we going to consider talking to those parents, like if they come to us asking about getting their child into the program?
We certainly can have those conversations. The decisions will be made on the data. So the data will either support their, their concern or not support their concern. I also put a, a survey out, we have to look at staffing. You know what I mean? If, if, if we have the staff and can do some extra and we decide that we want to do that, that's great. I don't know that we will, you know? So I, I put some feelers out to the teachers today to just kind of gauge no obligation kind of survey, but just to gauge who might be interested in, in teaching some summer school. So I, I would say nothing's off the table yet, but the first round will be, you know, based on the data by our invitation.
I have a few more things if everyone has done on that subject. We, the human resource position update, I've had six candidates have been contacted. Five have accepted an invitation for an interview. The sixth one hasn't called back. Of the five candidates, four are from industry and one is from education. And interviews are scheduled for Wednesday, April 7th, with the majority of them will be interviewed for, I believe, on that day and then one on Thursday, April 8th. And I'll update the board once we have gone through that process. Also, assuming that the boards may get a couple of calls here and there and casual, casual conversation with community members. Prom is scheduled for May 1st. It's going to be at the Croatian Hall in East Lake like it typically is from 6:30 to 10 o'clock. Seniors are the only ones that will be able to purchase tickets this year. Seniors can bring a date so long as he or she is a Riverside student in grades nine through 12. We're not going to be able to bring anyone from outside the district. Masks are to be worn except when eating and drinking. And I'm assuming we're going to have our photography company there. We still need to check that. And I'm going to make sure that they can take the masks off to get a nice picture. Throw the mask back on, and I believe that they're allowed to dance so long as they have masks on too, and they're not close. If you've ever been to a prom, it's a mass of 300 people in a, you know, square that's, you know, eight by five. So I don't, I don't envy the administrators, are they going to be there? I usually stop up for an hour or two when they crown the prom.
Does he deny it?
Do you know what I mean?
He's got plans.
So, that night I might have to wash my hair or something. Seniors will be selecting their table too when they're buying the tickets. That's another thing that's a little bit different. Also commencement is still planned for the outdoors in our stadium on Sunday, June 6th. And it's at noon, but we have a backup rain time on the same day at 4 o'clock. So if for some reason we can't do it at noon, we're going to try to do it at 4:00. So we're going to have to keep that day open. And then there's another, a second backup rain date. If Sunday is a wash, Monday, June 7th at 6:00 PM. And if that doesn't work, then we're going to probably do something inside the auditorium where we have a wash like we did last year. We'll be utilizing the, the district's calling system, website, social media platforms, and the senior remind to communicate any potential rescheduling of the event due to inclement weather. You know, students will get four tickets per, uh, four tickets will be given to each graduate, just like it would be if we were at, matter.
So just, just to make sure I'm, I'm tracking here, I'm putting this in my calendar. So the primary date is in the stadium on the 6th, the backup is the 7th.
That is correct.
And then was there a third date you made? Then, then we move inside potentially?
If we can get it on those two days, we may have to move it inside to the auditorium.
And it was those the 6th, 12th and 4th, depending on, 4 o'clock was the second, was the first backup on the same day.
Yeah. Thank you.
And we're setting up a, a small, smaller platform in the end zone with the parents being in the both sides of the stadium. We're also going to have regular folding chairs on the track for those people that are mobility compromised. The last thing I have too for the board is there's a need to schedule a work session to discuss phase two of our facility plan. And we also need to have an executive sessions for matters and negotiations. I'm hoping that we can look at possibly the second full week of April. I don't know if the 14th looks good for any, I'm sorry, what's that Tuesday is the?
13th. 13th.
Maybe a 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock start?
Just so you know, that week I'm out of town.
Okay, we can move it.
I got it, it, it has to be after that.
Okay.
Because my first two weeks I'm out there.
That's all right. We need you there.
20th will work if you want to do that.
I can't do the 20th. I can do any other day that week.
We moved the finance meeting.
I'm pretty much open, except the 6th.
Wednesday, the 21st?
I'm open on that.
Yes, Wednesday, 21st? Wednesday, 21st?
That works for me.
All right, 6 o'clock?
Yep. They'll send an invite.
All right. Wednesday, 21st at 6?
Yes, please.
All right, that concludes my report.
Okay. Blacko, treasurer's report.
Actually, we're going to start with the finance.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm so used to saying that, I didn't even look.
Right.
Finance audit personnel legislative, Mrs. Crossy.
We changed it up there for some.
You did. It's been a lot.
I, I did, and I wanted, I wanted to, I had, this was last on my notes that are for our finance committee meeting. First of all, we have finance committee meeting on March 15th. This was actually the fourth thing that we talked about, but I'll talk about it first here because we are moving the finance committee report to be directly prior to the treasurer's update, simply because there's, there's tends to be so much finance conversation that we felt that having the two separate leads to us, I don't want to say forgetting what was talked about.
Just get lost.
But there's just, there's just so much to review all the time that we felt it would be good to hear from the finance committee and then go directly to Gary's report. So we asked for that and they were able to fix that. So with that, I will start my report. We talked about a lot of things. We had, at our previous finance committee meeting, we had our attorney come and we had him back at our last meeting in order to talk about some risk mitigation for, coverage for workers' compensation for contractors that worked in our district. It was, it was valuable conversation. The meeting before, we had left it that Dan was going to work with our administrative team and Gary to come up with a list of what types of contractors we use in this district and who, who has their own workers' compensation coverage, who they're covered by, should we be providing that type of coverage and reporting them on our reports. So at this past meeting, we continued that conversation. We had a list of our contractors that were paid 1099s in 2020. And we reviewed that list and came to some, a conclusion on how we were going to categorize those businesses and entities that needed to be providing us with a certificate of workers' compensation coverage and other types of insurance coverage, information that they should have if they're going to work in our district. So we, we came to that conclusion. We set a, I think, $1,000 threshold that if somebody doesn't work here and, you know, earn $1,000 from our district, that they would not be required to provide that. But other ones that we would ask be asking them for those coverages, because a lot of them are already incorporated or LLC businesses. So they would already be having that coverage anyway. We will be making some follow-up on some of the contracts that we have with entities that perhaps have not provided that coverage and we haven't been clear on who's supposed to be providing that coverage. So we're going to be doing that. And it, it basically, it was just a conversation to, over the past couple of meetings, to, to discuss our coverage gaps. And for risk management, we thought that was important to do, so.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
So would it, would it make sense just for us to update our standard contract to, to, for, for individual consulting or ad hoc work?
Yeah.
To, to include that as coverage or?
Well, we don't really have like standard contracts because everybody is doing different types of service and whatever. We did request that Gary, as part of the agreements that we make with folks, to reach out and say, you know, we, they have to provide a W-9 as well. You know, they have, they have some other paperwork that they need to fill out and that they would be asking for, for those certificates. So I thought that was sufficient, that's pretty standard practice out there in the business world. So that was the first topic that we, that we reviewed. The second one was our lunch fund that we are going to be asking probably before the end of the year to make a larger transfer than was anticipated when we did the five-year forecast the last time. And mostly that is due to the effects of COVID and the reduction of sales for ancillary items through lunch lines. Some of the losses that we have from, you know, the nutrition services department is not providing catering services for, you know, group meetings and whatever, because people aren't eating, they're not, they don't have vending sales. So they're losing a lot of things and so that does make up a bulk of their access revenues. And even though we get.
Like in elementary schools, alibi sales because they're in classrooms and not in the cafeteria and adding up and getting extra items as well. So those are lost sales there.
And, you know, we have, we do have, you know, the federal contract with USDA that provides federal funding for our lunch programs. And since those are extended through the end of the year to have anybody qualify for USDA free lunch, again, people are, they're, they're not participating as much in purchasing lunches. So we are anticipating that we will have additional transfers that we need to make in order to make that fund whole by the end of the year, because that's a requirement that the funds are made whole. And we are, we did, we did have the conversation of using SRR funds in, in a manner that we can use them in one way and then be able to take that money, transfer it back to the general fund and then transfer it to our food service.
I also talked to, we, we talked about possibly moving expenditures from our food service fund onto the SRR funding. One of the issues that came up that I thought about was we receive a federal reimbursement for the number of meals we serve. And if we use federal funding to help bail out our losses, are we really double-dipping in the federal funding? And we got the ODE after our finance meeting and they clarified that yes, we can still do that because our federal reimbursement is not covering our current costs right now because we're serving less meals and because of COVID. So we're actually able to, in lieu of transferring, a general fund transfer, those funds, we actually use those expenses off of the food service fund and put it under the SRR fund. And that will just, you know, naturally bring the balance back positive.
Do we have a sense of how big the deficit is for food service?
Uh, right now about $300,000.
That's what we estimate through the end of the year, correct?
Yeah. Because we, we, we looked at the numbers and I think we've served somewhere between 80,000 and 100,000 less meals this year than we have in prior years. So it's, you know, because of the remote program, you know, parents are still coming and picking up meals, but you know, they're not coming to pick up meals. Each month it goes down, down for the remote learners, you know, we only serve the same things all the time. People are kind of tired of it. And, you know, so it's, there's, the meal quantities are way down. But the, you know, the staffing levels, we run pretty lean. We're looking at, you know, we have two people running one elementary school, we have two, three people in other schools. There's not a whole lot of room to, to make a staff adjustment. So it's just simply climbing the meals and just lost revenue from the catering and the alibi sales.
Do you have a sense if other districts are having a similar issue?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's a pretty common issue right now.
We look at as a future agenda, they don't come back and take a look once we know what next year will look like, to see if there's anything we should do in advance of the school year to kind of not have the same.
Issue.
Yes.
Well, and part of that is we don't know what next school year is going to look like, whether or not we'll still continue with remote or, or be in person 100%. So in addition to this, we, we generally are putting $75,000 transfer onto the books. And the general fund will, will be doing additional, additional creative financing, let's just put it that way, in order to be able to use some of those SRR 2 funds to be able to help the nutrition services department. In addition to that, we had talked about providing, you know, transportation and food service for the summer programs that, that Dr. Malacher is, is putting into place and that that would be one way to incentivize these kids to actually come and whatever. And so that, this is all concurred, you know, the, the finance committee has concurd with all these conversations. And so we recommend moving forward with all those recommendations. And then the last thing that we talked about, we didn't get too much into the SRR 3 funds, even though it's kind of wrapped it all up into the same package. But we talked about the, the continued spend down of the SRR 2 funds, which are the federal COVID relief special funding that, you know, is coming in from the, from the federal government, passed through to the state. And then, you know, we get those funds on a reimbursement basis. So the administration at the last meeting had talked about the supplantation of salaries from the general fund to pay, pay for the staff for our remote learning, at, uh, remote learning academy that we have. And we talked, we talked at great length at those last meeting about that. And we did come to a, a conclusion that this was a good plan going forward because we don't want to risk the loss of those funds at any time in the future. And so even though we have until 2023, we decided that it would be a good idea to use those now and then take those and move them, move those dollars, then we would be able to use those then into the general fund. And the recommendation at this point was then, you know, what do we do with those dollars now that we have them? It is, it is, it's sort of free money, right? We've got this $1.6 million plus we have another potential 3.9 and there, there could be SRR 4, right? At this point, we, we started having a conversation about that and what should we do with those? And so we had asked for some ideas to be brought forth, what, what we would be able to do with those dollars. And it was recommended and the finance committee did concur that those dollars should then be at, at, uh, they should be transferred into the PI fund to be used for some sort of facility plan. And that is why we are recommending the conversation that we're going to have about phase two. So we, we asked that that be fast-tracked so that we can determine, are we going to move ahead? Are we not going to move ahead? And if not, what can we do with those funds for our facilities? We had, we did have some conversation about when that transfer should take place. That transfer is not on our agenda right now.
Should it be on our agenda or no, to try to have that kind of transfer?
So basically, so what, so what we were basically doing.
So, basically, so what, so what we were basically doing is, you know, because we're supplanting general fund expenses by moving remote salaries and benefits over to the SRR funding, spend down SRR2 and dipping into SRR3, we create savings in the general fund. You know, we're in a pretty healthy position at this point, once you factor in, you know, we did have some state budget cuts and SRR1 and the workers' comp rebate, things like that, that helped offset those funding losses. So, the, the thought process was, you know, we, we supplant those expenses, the savings that we generate, we transfer to the permanent improvement fund and at that point, we can use those funds, whether it goes towards Phase 2, whether it goes towards other facility improvements. We even talked about possibly even building a school, you know, doing additional PI borrowing, things like that, so we're going to talk about that more, logistics of it at the work session. But as far as when we actually approve the transfer, the record, my recommendation to the committee was let's wait until the end of June. At that point, we'll have our SRR2 application approved with the HOPA Education. Hopefully, the SRR3 application will come out, we'll get that approved as well. And that would be actually, you know, for sure have a plan approved by the ODE and we make that transfer in June of whatever savings we generate through the end of the fiscal year and then we can go forward in the next fiscal year if we're doing additional at that time. So, so we don't want to, if we did the transfer tonight, we kind of put the cart before the horse because the application hasn't been approved yet and so if we wait, it is going to be, we can approve it any time, but once, we have to know the exact dollar amount we're going to transfer and, and make that transfer when we're approved. So, we suggest we can wait till June to see if we have time, work through logistics and we can have that work session in April and kind of get it all figured out exactly, you know, all, everything figured out is we don't risk making mistakes somewhere.
And I, I would like to recommend that we actually consider strongly doing that as soon as we can, simply because we're going to be doing a five-year forecast and those funds, if we don't, if we don't have that calculated before we do the five-year forecast, I want to make sure that, you know, we, we actually are going to move those funds. I would like to move forward with that plan. I think the committee was fully supportive of doing that. You know, I do agree that we need to have that conversation as a full board, which is why we're calling for the work session about our facility plan and how we're going to move forward with that. It does fast-track like some decisions that we've kind of been putting off just because of COVID. I think we had been fully prepared to go for Phase 2 previously, at least to put it before the board for a vote, but we did not get there because then COVID hit and, and that just kind of, kind of got put on the, on the back burner for the moment, but I think it's time to restart that conversation and to see what we're going to do and so I think we have to have that conversation as a board.
Are we able to put that as an agenda, add it as an agenda item with the, like, amount to be determined? Does it have to, do you have to, I mean, because it, I want to make sure that that, if the intent is for that wanting to go to the PI, I want to make sure that that's what we do now. I don't want to do this thing.
We have to have the, the exact amount determined because when the audit, when the auditors do their audit, there's a compliance supplement they follow and so they're going to look at the transfers as one of the procedures they always look at. So, they'll look for, did we board approve the amount, did we transfer the amount that was board approved?
Right, what I'm saying is can we not put though that's like, we could at least make an approval that that is what we're, agenda item, that's what our intent is?
Yeah.
Is it take that without?
Is there, is there any reason why we can't just use the 1.6?
We could, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those things, it's going to be probably more than that, but, you know, I just thought.
Let me, let me, just, I'm sorry, just have a more fundamental question. So, are we taking SRR funds and, and in essence, trans, transitioning them over to the PI fund? Is there, if, if we are, is that, is that within the scope of what we can do with it? And number two, I guess, is another question along those lines is, are we taking SRR funds, offsetting general, the, the general fund and then taking those savings from the general fund and moving them over? What is, what is the, what is the process?
Move the latter of those two things. So, you can't, you can't just transfer SRR funds into PI and do whatever you want. You have to use, the SRR funding has like 12 different categories of what you can spend it on, you know, things like special ed, which we already get federal special ed funding and we don't, we'll need additional funding. There's different categories, but one of the, you know, basically, one of them is to continue to pay existing salaries and continuing operations, so that's the final one, it's very general, but they want to make sure it's something that's COVID-related. So, that's why we wanted to do remote teaching salaries because like with COVID, we wouldn't have a remote teaching program. And so, that's why we're picking remote teaching salaries because by having a remote program allows better social distancing in person and, you know, it was all because of COVID. So, when you create that general fund savings, now you can use that general fund that's unrestricted as long as it's a proper public purpose to do whatever initiative that you want, so you don't have to worry about tying to these federal, you know, these federal requirements. So, you kind of loosen those restrictions on that savings and then that's where we're talking about transferring those funds to PI to go towards facility improvements.
The biggest thing is we need to make sure that we essentially claim that money sooner than later because.
Right.
The conversation that Dan and I had the one day was that there are districts who even didn't claim SRR1 and then the money was gone, even though they were told they would have it.
It's, it's not really gone, what happened was the state.
Well, delayed.
The state ran out of appropriation to approve reimbursements. So, you have to wait till legislature approves additional appropriation at the state level before they can continue the reimbursement. So, we already had our SRR1 funds spent down and got our reimbursement.
Right.
Before that happened, so probably the next month or two, it'll get that all straight away and they can start redoing those, those reimbursements. Like, one of the, one of the allowed uses for SRR funding was like to do HVAC improvements, but, you know, like, for example, our construction project, we're still paying construction invoices early, four years into it. So, if you were doing HVAC project and things get delayed because you, you have to do it during the summertime or during breaks and you don't get it done and paid and approved by September of 2023, which is only two more school years from now, you could lose those funds. So, if we use this other allowable purpose by using remote teacher salaries, then we're kind of unrestricted at that point. We, you know, we're not tied to a timeline, we can put those funds away for facility improvements or, you know, any other purpose per se.
Yeah. So, I, I think we, I'd like to understand more, so I, I'm going to set the time to come in and chat with you, so I, I fully understand what's going on. The, the other, the other thing that we've got to keep in mind is, do we, do we know the impact to, to the, the property taxes and, and, you know, delinquency rates and things like that? Are, are, are we, are we going to move this money over and then all of a sudden realize that, that because of the, the downturn in the economy, that we're not getting as much expected revenue because people aren't able to pay and that, that our, our levy cycle is, is now shortened?
Well, we should, we should be getting our settlement soon from Lake County. We just got our settlement from Jogger County, Jogger County's a tiny little piece and those collections were higher, but it's only a small, low residential portion in Chardon, so it's not really a good gauge. I would think that commercial taxes is probably where you'd see any delinquency if there is because as you know, the housing market is still hot, you know, every time a property sells, it taxes their tree out behind it, so you wouldn't really see delinquency in, in those type of transactions. And a lot of people pay, pay their taxes through escrow as well, so they're already having the funds set aside for that, but we'll hopefully know soon where we fall in, you know, in the, in the second half of 2020 collection, we actually saw an increase in collection as opposed to a decrease. You know, I can't really say where we're at now. I know, I had a meeting with Mr. Galloway a few weeks ago, it was before the property tax, before, it was past the deadline for property tax payments, but they were still keeping it open, waiting for delays because of the mail and other issues to come in. And they said as, I think you said as a county, they were down about 10 million county-wide, so they divide that among all the different municipalities and, and school districts and things, so I don't think it's going to be all that significant if there's a decrease in collection, but we'll, we'll know a little bit more here in the coming weeks. And we can certainly discuss more at the Buildings and Grounds on Thursday as well.
Yeah, that, that'd be great, that's going to be.
And, you know, we, we did, we did briefly touch on that as a conversation in our Finance meeting and again, this is, this is money that we did not have previously, the SRR funds, the first round of the SRR funds we used for COVID-related expenses and personal protection equipment, we, we paid for the shields, we, we paid for a lot of those things that we needed to purchase in order to get students back in school. And I think round two, the fact that we probably spent more dollars, I think was, was more than probably offset by the workers' comp refunds that we got because that was probably, well, at least a million and a half, I'm going to guess.
We had, we had 654,000 in workers' comp rebate and there was other funding besides SRR that was the coronavirus relief fund and that was where we actually bought a lot of the hand sanitizer and the dust shield. So, you know, these different funding sources that came through because of COVID, you know, basically, SRR2 is a little, you know, once, by the time SRR2 came around, we kind of were already made a hole between what we got from SRR1, from the state budget, you know, we had the state budget cut and then we got additional funding from SRR1 and the workers' comp rebate and things like that, so it kind of made us pretty close to the hole at this point for SRR2 and now SRR3.
And with SRR3 and again, it's possible we could have SRR4. So, again, this is, this is additional, additional dollars that we did not have before that, you know, we, as a committee and I think as, as an entire team that was sitting in that room, it was, we decided it was fairly important to determine what we could do that was, that was, you know, pretty impactful for our students and for our community and so we thought that this would be the best plan moving forward since we were supplanting dollars. As far as the transfer, I, you know, I, I can understand both sides. I, my personal preference is to put it on and, and get the transfer done as soon as we can, but, you know, I, I would allow the board to determine when we do that.
We also had other discussions as far as, you know, can we supplant these general fund dollars and use it for maybe something curriculum-related or something other program-related? But at the same time, it has to be something, you know, there has to be a need for that, there has to be something that's sustainable over time and can't, you know what I mean? So, it, it didn't really make a whole lot of sense, so I'm sure there's a few things that we could do that, but not to the, the magnitude of, of, you know, 1.6 million or 3.9 million to that magnitude, so it didn't make a lot of sense to try to, you know, explore those options and we thought that this was a good alternative and, you know, as, as we all know, facilities is a, is a need in this district, whether that's new facilities or renovation, we all know that, that, you know, there's some things that need to be done.
And we certainly will spend, you know, in the remote learning academy, we'll spend these dollars before the end of June, so.
So, are you asking as far as a Finance Committee Chair to have that set as an agenda item tonight or do you want, what, what?
My personal preference, of course, and I'm only here with the Finance Committee, my personal preference is to actually get that on the agenda this evening, at least in the amount of the, the SRR2 funds. It just, it just makes me more comfortable that we're actually moving forward with that as a plan that the, that the committee has recommended.
So, so.
It is not currently on the agenda.
Yeah. So, I guess I would like to have a, a, a better understanding of, of some, some details and so I'd like to sit down with, with Mr. Placco and, and better understand it. So, i- if we did put it on the agenda, I would have to devote name, so, but I do, it's, it's a whole lot to be brought forward in, in, in a single meeting and not, and have to make a decision, so.
And I, I'm fine with that, I would, if that's, I, I would, I would like us to all be in concurrence with, with the recommendation of the committee, actually, and at the end of the day, if we're going to have a strategic, or a, a meeting about Phase 2 and, and our facilities and we're going to have that in April, then perhaps we can have that on our April.
Right, so they can call then to have it for the April agenda.
At that point, we'll, we'll have the facilities discussion with the, with the work session. Our, our application for SRR2 should be approved by the HOPA Education by then. We'll, should have a property tax settlement, so we'll know, you know, where that came in at as well and we can have a, maybe a little more clarity. And, you know, once you, once you board approve the transfer, you, you really can't transfer it back, so it's.
We had this conversation last month.
Yeah, I would be, I would be very comfortable with that and then at the end of the day, you know, we can, we still have a week and that is before our five-year forecast is due as well, so it would be, to be on our forecast, so.
Let's make it a goal then for April.
And just so, the, what's on the appropriations on the Finance, on the agenda today is the total funds for SRR1 and SRR2. So, the, the adjustment that's being made today would complete that SRR1 and SRR2 funding and that's what Belinda is talking about moving over to the PI fund, not SRR3, which was a.
And so, right, we have, we do have on the agenda item for this evening, we have the, we, we did half of it, I think that was the last meeting.
Yeah, a little less than half of the last meeting. This is, this night's just a preparation of authorized spending, then we can start doing the supplanting because, you know, at the end of the day, we're already free up in the general fund, we can really do any purpose for at that point, whether it is for facilities, which is what the renovation is, but there's always the possibility to, to take another direction.
So, so I actually have a question related to curriculum and, and Dr. Malacher, so, so we, we've had a new experience in the last year of having an online curriculum and, and kind of off the cuff at one of the meetings, recent meetings, you said, gosh, you know, what, what does the future of, of education Riverside look like? Is it going to include an online component? So, in, in the mix of trying to figure out our facilities, we, we probably need to understand if, if that's a serious, you know, a serious option or, or not, because that affects the, the footprint that we're going to need and, and so we, we need to make sure we understand at least the near-term future of Riverside and how we plan to deliver our academic studies.
So, I, go ahead. Dr. Kales has to say, jump in because we've been having these conversations going on.
Yeah, we've had some of these discussions with other area schools as well. One of our concerns is how successful are the students that are offered in remote academy? It's kind of a question that you posed earlier and whether or not that type of program would be offered to those students that just didn't fare well under that type of platform. And it's difficult for us to gauge that, that if someone would want to have that type of platform but weren't successful, should we allow them to, to have the construction delivered that way? Now, that's one of the, one of the issues that we're having right now. We don't want to put, we don't want to set kids up for failure. And, but we also want to provide other opportunities for the students. We've been discussing this at the board table for several years about offering different opportunities. Now, that may be offering more vocational-based programs, but it can also apply to online learning as well. I think it's, I don't want to say it's, we've opened up a Pandora's box on it, but I knew it was coming down the pipe and we have to gauge what that looks like this coming year. We are sending some surveys out, we did to the remote parents right now. We don't know what it looks like in terms of the parents who have sent their kids to in-person learning. We probably should be touching base with them as well to see if they're interested. If it's the case, we're going to have to look at our staffing as well. It might inflate our need to provide for more instruction, more instructors to, to, to be able to do this. So, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot that's out there right now. I don't have a straight answer for you, but we have been working at it for the past several months, actually.
Yeah, because I, I do think that, that getting an assessment of where we were last year, because last year we, it was brand new, we were not prepared for it, it was thrust upon us, but this year we, we, we were thoughtful about it because it could be and, and I think we did a lot of great things with, with our online education. Obviously, the number of students who are involved with that, who need the, the, the extra time in, in summer school is going to be a barometer on, on how effective we were, but, but, you know, I, I think they're, we're in a, in a period of transition in education, so, so it seems or it could be. And so, when we're talking about permanent improvements and not knowing the future of what our delivery process is going to be, it's, it's, it's a, it's a really sticky wicket.
It, it, we were going to share this with the board, we, we talked about it, whether or not we're going to share with the board tonight because it's so fresh, but we did send out surveys to, of remote parents and as of Tuesday morning, there were 238 responses and, and we've asked a couple of different questions. One question was, let's see. One question was whether or not parents would be interested in rolling their child into a full-time remote learning program for the 21, 22 school year if offered. And these are just remote parents. 95 parents said no, 87 parents said yes and 56 said, parents said it was too early to tell. And then they, we asked, why would they be interested in a full-time remote learning program for 21, 22 school year? 60% said that they were interested in remote learning regardless of the pandemic. 36 parents said that they were not comfortable sending their children back during the pandemic and 44 parents said it was too early to tell and 98 parents were not interested at all. So, they're, it's across the board really, but those are just the remote, it's not the...
So, of these numbers of surveys that you got back, what percent of it is reflective of the total kids that are in the program?
I haven't gotten there yet.
So far, we, as of those responses, it was 238 parents and we have about 1,200 students in remote learning right now. But we just sent a survey. students in remote learning right now. But we just sent the survey out Monday morning.
1,200 students, but how many families?
We have 1,200 students in remote learning.
Right, so not, not 1,200, but you wouldn't be expecting 1,200 responses. I mean, I've got three kids and two of mine are in remote, so that's one response.
127 parents also responded that they were comfortable sending their children back to school for in-person learning for the 21, 22 school year. 35 parents responded they were not comfortable sending their children back. And 76 responded it was too early to tell.
So the survey does, it did, I mean, I believe you took it, it does ask you how many kids you have. So we just, because the survey was so new, and it's going to be open for another four days, we didn't really dig down into.
We have to think beyond the COVID, too. It's the whole idea that now this has been offered, regardless of COVID, regardless of any type of pandemic or any other situation, is whether or not, number one, we offer a program, and if we do, I mean, how successful are the students going to be being into that program?
I just wonder from a financial, you know, you got to wonder, the amount of money that we lose each year to community schools, charter schools, things like that. I think we've done an exceptional job from listening to the classes gone on with my kids in it. Like I said, two of my three of them are doing remote, one of them is in person at the move. That, could we not get some of those kids into Riverside? And then they get the opportunity to do things like march in band, or be a part of the football team, or things like that. And that we could build a remote academy to be something that we can gain some of our community members back. Maybe we get community, maybe we get, it's an open enrollment type thing, and you've got kids from other districts that even choose to do that, as opposed to going back to in-person. I mean, I think there is other opportunities there that we need to still explore, because we have done, I think, a very nice job with our L A.
Just also accessibility questions that need to be answered, not only for students with special needs, but also people who we were, I mean, if we can, denying them the access to remote if they want it. Talking to some other area superintendents, they are heck bent on the fact that they do not want students in a remote program that showed that they couldn't be successful in the first place in such a remote.
Well, I don't disagree with that. I mean, it's almost an application process. So I'll tell you what, my youngest wanted to be able to promote, and I was like, pooh, never a chance. Like, he would not succeed at all, right? Like, there are only certain kids that certainly, it can't be used as an excuse not to go to school. It needs to be taken on for the right reasons.
Yeah. It's also about, like I said, do we, you know, it's like this, you deny a student with special needs going remote if they want, or do we have to provide the accommodations outside the, you know, in-person setting? There's a lot of questions.
It's a conversation we definitely need to have. I don't know right now, but it's certainly.
Or that question is, if that's the case, does a parent waive the accommodation?
Right.
It's just a lot of different questions to be answered.
Is that something that can be discussed in curriculum further, then?
We would need to get people guidance most likely when it comes to the special.
I just meant the entire R L A thing, though. I mean, it's something that definitely we need to be talking about more. We can talk about it forever tonight.
The other thing, too, is, you know, even in the course of, I'm not giving too much detail about discussions of negotiations, but we are aware of this is coming down the pipe. And as we're looking at the current bargaining agreement, we're trying to get it up to date, at least to where we think we are going to be in the next few years.
So I have a quickie question, not having kids in, in school. So are the teachers teaching from their homes? Are they teaching from a classroom here for the remote, for our L A? Where are they actually conducting their classes remotely from?
Do you want me to?
You have to answer that.
So at the beginning of the year, we gave them the option, because a lot of teachers who we placed in the Remote Learning Academy had health issues themselves. Remember, we talked about being able to meet their needs and the kids' needs at the same time. So we gave them that option. Now, they still have that option. We have not made them come back to teach from school, but I know there are a number of them that come in and teach from the building. So we have found a place for them. And it's not necessarily in their classroom, although some of them, we have been able to free up a classroom where we didn't need to use it for in-person instruction. So it's a mix of both. Definitely, I would say more so at the beginning of the year. More of them were staying home. I think more of them are coming in and working from school. But the, the building principals typically know, or the Remote Learning Academy principal knows where they are. So if we should need to get ahold of them, we can find them.
What, the misnomer is it's a lie. People think it's easier to teach from home, it's not. It is, you have all your resources here in your classrooms, but.
Probably also teach from yourself, is it a plan?
It does. It's like working from home. I can't work from home.
All right, well, that was the longest finance committee report ever. Is it still going out? Because there's no more.
No, I know, I have no legislative updates. There's probably a lot going back because of the state budget, but it will.
You're done. No. Okay, Mr. Placco, do you have more to add?
I have a few, few additional items.
Okay.
The first thing is, obviously, you just mentioned the state budget season. We talked about the Fair School Funding Plan. I was asked to be on a leadership team. It's a collaboration between Blasco, OSBA, and NASA, to set a meeting with Senator Serino, District 18. And so there's Mike Hanlon from Chardon Superintendent, George Joseph from Kent Schools, he's superintendent there, Craig McHenry from Ravenna Schools, he's a treasurer there, myself, and then Kathy Leavenworth from West Gagga is a board member. We're working together to try to put this meeting together on Monday at 1:00 P. M. And we're inviting all superintendents, treasurers, and board members from District 18 to attend the meeting. I believe the board just received an email from, from Kathy inviting you to that meeting. I encourage you to attend if possible. I will also send a meeting invite, so you have the Zoom information. If you're able to attend, that'd be great.
Oh, it's a Zoom meeting?
It's a Zoom meeting, virtually. We're hoping to get as many people from District 18 on that meeting.
When did she send us that?
This Monday.
Okay, well, I probably.
It might came from OSBA.
That's why, because I really love this.
So I will send the invites to everyone, so they have the information. Just let me know if you're planning on attending or not. You can submit questions in advance to Senator Serino. We're going to do some testimony to him. It's more of to open a dialogue, not really to gang up on him per se, but it's just to have an open dialogue and try to garner his support. Because the, as you know, the Fair School Funding Plan passed in the House in the last General Assembly, died before it went to the Senate. It's been reintroduced by the House. This General, General Assembly is House Bill One. It's co-sponsored by our own Jamie Callender in Concord Township, who's one of the co-sponsors of the bill. And we just want to, you know, try to garner that Senate support. It's most likely to be rolled into the budget bill from the House version, but we anticipate resistance on the Senate side, because the Senate leader, Matt Housman, has a history of not being very supportive of public education. And so, you know, I guess we'll see how that goes. We'll try to garner that support, hopefully get, get the fair funding school plan passed, and finally have a formula that works for districts that's explainable, and actually fund education based on the cost of educating a child, and actually fund school districts based on the kids that they're actually educating, as opposed to right now where we get a funding amount, and they deduct charter schools, and, you know, community schools, STEM schools, and Peterson scholarships, Ed Choice scholarships, and all these deductions. So it's like, it makes it way too complicated. It's been deemed unconstitutional now for over 20, 20, I think, 24, 24-year anniversary when it was deemed unconstitutional, and we're still not had a fix that's been put in place.
It's kind of like, if you've grown a lot for 25 years.
This Monday, the 29th, at what time?
It's, yeah, at 1:00 P. M. Of course, it's our spring break week, but, you know, it's based on Serino's availability. And of course, every district may have different spring breaks, so it's kind of hard to avoid spring breaks in all districts that'll be involved in that.
Well, that would be good, that would be a good opportunity for board members and administration alike to participate with him, because this is new territory for him, school finance, and whatnot, and.
If, if the email that was sent out, there's any questions you want to submit in advance, we welcome to do that. Maybe you'd like to speak, let me know.
Can you reforward that?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't realize you were, like, involved in that, so.
It was kind of a.
It came from OSBA, and it was vague and whatever.
It was kind of the, the superintendents, the superintendents of the group reached out to the superintendents, and the treasures working, working with the treasures.
Yeah, it seemed like Mike, it seemed like it was Hanlon talking to Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe send something else out.
I figured I'd brief you guys anyways, you know, but I was encouraging my colleagues to do that as well, just because, you know, as you know, we get all kinds of emails all the time, so sometimes it's, it's hard to keep up on reading. Wanted to touch real quick, we talked about unemployment fraud, I think it was the last item or the meeting before. Just another perfect public service announcement to go to the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services website if you have any fraudulent claims in your name. Riverside has now had 83 fraudulent employee claims, or current employees, we received claims from them, it was actually ended up in fraud. So that represents 16% of our entire staff, and now have been compromised on this unemployment thing. There's some type of security data breach out there, everyone's information seems to be out there somewhere, it's just a matter of time before.
Yeah, it's crazy. I've gotten two for different renters at my rental house in Menor.
Yeah.
And they're using my address and using their names, and they haven't been there for 20 years.
We've seen, like, we'll get a, it's an employee, one of our employees' social security number, but it's one of the child's names, and all kinds of weird stuff, or, you know, employee's maiden name instead of their current name, and it's just.
And it's not easy to report it.
No.
I spent a half an hour on the phone three different times, and finally I just gave up.
My office, we've been, my payroll and staff have been notifying employees as we hit them, and, you know, of course, everybody freaks out when they first get it. It's taken a lot of time, and explaining to them what they need to do, but as far as I can, given update on that, it just keeps, you know, in a single day, we'd be 14 claims in one day of fraud. So we try to fight those off, too, because, you know, school districts are direct payers of unemployment, so it slips through, and now we're privileged paying someone fraudulent unemployment at that point, and we have to try.
Yeah, see, that's cool. They're just giving that money away. How are they going to collect it back?
I also received, because I had one filed on me, and then I received a bank card. And when the bank card comes through, it's very confusing. And again, it took forever to get that reported, so that no one could use that card, because the money was going to be put onto that card.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and they don't need the card to use it. They can just, they get the number somehow.
Yeah, see, that's.
Our third party, is our third party administrator, like, notifying us immediately when they get those claims in?
Yeah, yeah. They're trying to, getting any data.
Yeah, I'm sure they are. I backed two in the last week.
I think they said, I think it was either last week or the week before, that the state had over 300,000 fraudulent unemployment claims that they're actively looking into, fraudulent claims. So it's just been crazy. And then the, I think the last update I had is we talked about the Honorable State Award. We did receive that from the last audit, so we are six consecutive years that we've received the Honorable State Award. And I believe that concludes my report.
May I interject one, I have a minority out of mine, going back to this whole senior project thing which bugged me, is we are having senior project that starts May 17th through May 27th, but we are not having junior project, which is like a shadowing day for juniors.
Okay.
So I just wanted to tie it with the board.
Thank you.
This takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes.
Okay.
That then takes us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and vote on individually. Finance at audit is first.
Yes, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit. Consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer, items A through I. One second.
Actually, if I can make a motion to, to take item B and vote on it separately, please? Yeah, correct.
This is the resolution.
Yeah, I would, I would drop this resolution. A motion to approve the items listed on the finance. An audit consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer, items A through I, excluding item B, which we will vote on separately. Does that work for you?
Works. Second. If you needed one.
All right, so item B was the resolution supporting the fair funding app, so we'll vote on that separately. Most of these, you know, we do try and cover these in the, in our conversations with the committee. We have that one. We also have our permanent appropriations, revision for the additional S R funds. As, as Lori had spoken about, the Educational Partnership Institute contract for our strategic plan services, and I just wanted to read through our donations before we voted. We had a number of individuals who had donated to the side for Project Hope. So we have Christina Abbott, Luna Alina Fatika, James and Linda D'Amico, Lisa D'Amico, Dan and Karen Laskozic, the Riverside Choir Boosters, RHS from Joyce, recognizing RHS from Joyce Reagan. And then we also had some sound amplification systems donated to Mallridge Elementary from the Chota Club of Lake County. Thank those individuals and organizations for those donations. Do we have any other discussion on any of those items, A through I, excluding item B? Mr. Placco, can you call the roll?
Lori Krasinski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Graskey?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Motion carried.
Do you want me to just do I and B now?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, I'm, I'll just read it, hold on, let me go back to I and B. Sorry. All right, we have a motion to, a motion to approve the resolution to endorse the Fair School Funding Plan as contained in House Bill One, and to encourage the 134th General Assembly to expedite the passage of this bill. One second?
A second.
Thank you.
So if we can have a discussion.
Sure.
So, so I definitely agree that the, the current funding process is, is non-existent, right? It, it's not based on logic or really law or anything. So, so the, the current funding system is, is not acceptable. I'm going to have to abstain on this, because I don't know enough about what's going on here. I did look online to find out more information. Here, here's the problem, is that right now, the, the Ohio budget is $72 billion a year, and they're talking about taking $2 billion and supplementing schools, which is great, except that, are they going to raise taxes? Are they, I don't, it's not clear how they're going to do that. And, and because I don't know, I am not in favor of, of having, increasing our, our budget to 74 billion dollars a year. I, I just, I don't know enough about it, so I am, I am not comfortable voting in favor of it. I don't know enough about it to vote against it, so I'm going to abstain, just, that, that's my discussion.
Is there any other discussion at the table? All right, then, can we call the roll?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Graskey?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Abstain.
Lori Krasinski?
Aye.
Motion carried. Take this then to personnel.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel. Consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent, items A through G. One second?
One second.
Any discussion on these? All right, well, if not, can we call the roll, Mr. Personnel?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Graskey?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krasinski?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We also have the athletic supplemental contracts. So we have a recommendation to approve the following athletic contracts for eighth grade cheerleading coach, baseball varsity assistant, and softball volunteer. One second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? And can we call the roll, please?
Jennifer Harden?
Abstain.
Linda Graskey?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krasinski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds?
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds. Consent agenda items A through C, as recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second, please?
One second.
I heard, Ms. Krasinski, Mrs. Krasinski, sorry. And, and any discussion? All right, here you go. Can you call the roll, please?
Linda Graskey?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krasinski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carried. That last, it takes us to Board of Education update. Anyone else got anything?
I have one thing. I just wanted to say thanks to all the people that are cooperating with us in the second vaccine, also for Chuck Schlick, kind of spearheading it for our district, and also the Health Department. Anyone else we're missing? And thanks for Gina again, she was there.
Good job, Gina.
I would like to commend our staff, and, you know.
Just everybody.
Yeah, however, at the end of the day, the percentage rate that, that, the positive response and percentage rate that you guys have here was, is phenomenal, coming from an organization where we had less than 40%. It's really good to see that. where we had less than 40%. It's really good to see that. So.
Great. All right. With that, I'm going to make a motion at 8:31 PM to adjourn to executive session for discussion on purchase or sale of property. If I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck. Can we call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krasinski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Gracy?